All right, it's seven o'clock and start our meeting this evening. And we begin by just reiterating something that we used to start every meeting with, which is our mission statement. Well, Peer Community Schools is a dynamic community organization embracing our students with a quality learning environment, developing independent and confident learners for the future. And with that, uh... Do us in the pledge?
I think it does.
Yes, we have some members of our student council.
All right, excellent. Would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you very much. All right, first up on our agenda this evening is our presenting school, Murphy Elementary, who's going to talk to us about rule number two, Benchmark 2.1B. So, Mr. Downey, please.
That's the last slide. (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
That's a jury issue there, sorry.
So, um, first of all, I guess, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you guys about some things that are happening in Murphy Elementary School. I'm going to be the first to wish you all happy holidays and Merry Christmas. Um, and we decided to share some of the things that are happening there in relationship to finding balance. If you look at that first slide, um, whether we're talking about our personal lives or professional lives, it's often talking about finding a balance, a balance between work life and all, a balance between marriage and our kids, our life and our spouse and our kids. At school, we're talking about the same sort of things, or similar things, in the sense that the quote kind of sums it up in terms of, at what point do we want to, um, provide support for our students and at what point do we want our students to be, you know, responsible for their own learning? It's a balance. Jared's only just mouthed the control, but...
Just gotta use the arrows. Use the arrows on the keyboard.
There we go. There we go. So, um, when we think about a classroom, there are two basic forms of instruction. One is teacher-directed. When you think back to, um, you know, classrooms, the straight rows, teacher interacting with the students and students interacting with the teacher, um, that's a teacher-centered classroom environment. What we would like our staff start doing is to realize that there are opportunities during the day where students can be more learner-centered, where a classroom can be more student-centered, where they aren't interacting with just the teacher, but interacting with a partner, with a small group, uh, in a way that makes them more responsible for their own learning. Hopefully engaging them more and making them more motivated to learn. So, why did we choose this as our focus? First, uh, we chose it because, I guess it's quite kind of, you get some kudos to Matt Wadre, even though he's not here, Michelle Bradford, even though she's not here, because, um, they provided the district the opportunity, starting last year, to do instructional rounds. And from those instructional rounds, the administration was able to visit every building in the district. And from that process last year, um, they identified as a next step for Murphy Elementary being maximizing student-centered instruction in the classroom. So, because of that, even though this is my first year at Murphy, it made it much easier for me to hit the ground running, knowing where to start, um, the process of me leaving that building. The second reason, we tied it to the district book study, uh, the Ten Mind Frames for Visible Learning. Um, we've also tied it to the essential practices, um, specifically essential practice number one, because it, well, essential practice number one is all about fostering literacy motivation, which ties in very nicely with, um, you know, a student-centered environment. And also essential practice number seven, is building vocabulary and content knowledge. And the reason we chose that is because that's something that Murphy had already been working on the previous year. So, it wasn't something new to Murphy staff, it was just now just digging a little bit deeper. And obviously tied to our board, which John Mr. Norman's already kind of talked about, board goal number two, which in it states, um, you know, a learner-centered, learner-centered instructional model where students can be self-determined academic and personal roles. Strategy 2.1 leads to professional development, which is what much, much of what we're going to be talking about tonight takes place. And Benchmark 2.1.B, again, going back to K-12 teachers, all of our staff in all the buildings are going to be effective to facilitate a student-centered learning. But the bottom line, we just simply believe that when students are more, are more engaged in their learning, when they shared control and responsibility for their learning, that's a, that's a good paradigm shift when you think about traditional classrooms and the fact that from a teacher's perspective, sometimes it's very difficult to, um, you know, release some of that control to the students. So, we're going to talk very briefly about the six steps that we have taken, that continue to take, uh, in that endeavor. So, where do we begin? Step one. The graphic kind of talk exemplifies what we attempted to do at very beginning, building a common definition of understanding and make sure that we weren't all, um, you know, striving for something different. So, define what does a student-centered classroom look like for us? And so, in that picture there underneath, uh, the target, the most in different colors speaking of, we started by, each teacher was asked to write down their own definition of what student-centered classroom entails. After they were given some time to write down their own definition, they were put into grade, into, uh, their grade levels. And they shared with their grade levels what they had written individually. And then they were asked to now combine their thoughts and their ideas to create a grade level, definition of a student-centered classroom. From there, they were put into lower elementary and upper elementary. So, the K-2 teachers all did the same thing with their new definitions, shared them with the other grade levels, and came up with another common definition. And upper elementary did the same thing, they were doing fifth grade. And then very top, you see the pink speaking notes, those are the definitions that came out of those, um, lower and upper elementary discussions. And this is what we came up with. We'll see three, because one is the lower elementary definition, one is the upper elementary definition, and one happens to be my own, which I did not share with the staff when we first started, because, again, I wanted, didn't want to, um, I didn't want my opinion or my thoughts of student-centered, uh, classrooms to impact what they were going to create. But what we discovered is, is that even though we didn't necessarily say the same thing exactly verbatim, many of the elements that we all came up with in our different definitions were similar. So, we knew that, we're starting at least at the same spot. So, since we then had a common understanding, the next two steps that we took are really kind of self-assessment. So, what are we doing? We know what we're trying to achieve, but what are we doing now? So, step two, we looked at what are we doing? Each teacher was given the opportunity to write down some things that they do in their classroom that make it student-centered. Those are the things that you see in green. We put them on the two charts, a chart for essential practice number one and essential practice number seven. Each one of those essentials has different elements, different bullets. And so, we put those things that we're currently doing on those charts. And what we noticed is that many of those things that you see in green, things that we're currently doing, ended up on their essential, uh, practice number seven, which makes sense, because that's what Murphy had spent a lot of time, in fact, all of last year, on. When they were asked to write down some of the things that they were considering doing in their classrooms to make it more student-centered, they put those on purple. And so, what we were hoping to see is that there wouldn't be a big overlap of purple on top of green. If we were already doing things for essential practice number seven under the different bullets, and we weren't seeing a lot of evidence for essential practice number one, hopefully we're going to see that the things that we're planning on doing are going to help us fill some of the gaps and make, and strengthen areas that, that right now we don't see a lot of evidence for, and we did see that. Many of the areas in, uh, strategy in purple fell under essential practice number one. So, it filled in very nicely. The yellow speaking notes, we'll get to later, because those came at a later time, um, when we started in on our lab days, which we'll get to. Because when we started to tie it all together, the next two steps. Like I said, we were, every teacher is, is right now in every building, uh, part of this book study on the Ten Mind Frames for Visible Learning. And in that book, are strategies that we're using to try to tie into, um, our classroom practices to make them more student-centered. These are things that the teachers aren't just making up on their own, but they are research-based. So, at every PD, we look at different chapters from the book to try to take elements from what we're learning and put it into practice. Step five, lab days, um, was really a very powerful step. The reason why I say that is because of that, what we hope to find from PDs is that what they're learning transfers into the classroom. And this gives us a really good example of that happening. Um, the lab days was, consisted of every grade level having the opportunity to work with Tammy Curry, like at the, at the Institute for Planning, Organizing, and Orchestrating those lab days. Um, I'll be asking her to come up here in a second to kind of like talk about that a little more detail, but, um, essentially, each grade level had the opportunity to work together, under the direction of Tammy, and they looked at some videos that come from the state of Michigan that, uh, exemplify practices in classrooms specific to the essentials. So, they looked at essential practice of one, essential practice of seven through videos, and in the morning had discussion about what they saw in those videos. Leading to the afternoon, which was, was really powerful about that, about that lab days, they then worked as a group, a grade level group, to actually create a lesson where they purposely put into it elements to make it as student-centered as possible. And then not only did they plan it, they actually had a chance to implement it. And then after implementation, they had a chance to come back and debrief what it was that went really well, what were some things that could have been improved. And so, it was really an opportunity for true collaboration in the sense that what they were able to accomplish really brought forth a lot of, uh, very valuable dialogue. And those opportunities that, for teachers to interact with that, sometimes are few apart between. So, I'm going to ask Tammy to come up right now and talk about some of the student-centered strategies that were discussed during the lab days.
Hi, I'm Tammy Curry, and I'm with Jack, uh, Murphy, part-time, and, and a part-time member for the district for new teachers. So, uh, we really dug into the essential practices, uh, from the state of Michigan, our literacy. And we focused on essential one, which was, um, student motivation or engagement. And we felt like, um, many of those strategies within that essential, um, helped our classroom become student-centered. So, some of the things that we discussed and that we tried out, uh, were, um, partner reading, which most classrooms do partner reading on a daily basis. The workshop model is student-centered, so that's done on a daily basis. Um, we just added some things that may make some, um, some of our strategies more student-centered. So, we talked about checklists for students to monitor their own learning. We talked about creating, um, rubrics, not teacher-created, but, um, teacher as well as student-created rubrics for them to monitor themselves as they, um, work through their, uh, projects or, or work that they're doing. Um, we talked a lot about partner writing, and, um, this is something that we do in reading all the time, but not necessarily in writing. So, um, with the partner writing, students are creating, uh, a piece or, um, kindergarten-created game, um, where the students are working together, sharing the pen, and every student is very successful with their writing, and then as well as sharing it with their classmates, um, they felt very confident, successful with reading it. Uh, students are making their own choices in their classroom with, with their reading, um, in almost all classrooms. And then book clubs, we talked about, we learned a lot of student-led discussions. So, um, teaching those students how to talk to each other, how to ask questions, and how to answer those questions, um, leads to some deep understanding of the books that they're reading. Oh, here's an example. So, um, one of our lab days, this is what came out of it, and, um, we see her carrying this through, um, with her instruction even after the lab day. So, we, she did a re-allow, and from the re-allow, she pulled out some examples of care letters. So, this is something that we learned last year and is continuing to use this year. So, um, there's a student-centered, or not student-centered, but, um, student-friendly definitions were created from it. And then, um, so the students are practicing the words, they're saying the words, they're know, are, um, practicing the meanings of the words, doing picture sorts. And then at the end of the, of the lesson, um, they're, they actually partner, um, they were with a partner, and they created a student, or a piece of writing together. Uh, they had to pick the words that they were going to use in their writing, they wrote a story between the words, and they shared the pens. So, with this one, uh, the students were writing every other word. So, they had to really talk about what they were going to write, uh, what it meant, and they were writing as a, as a partner. I also want to say that I'm in my, well, just, she happens to be here tonight, she does a deck that you have in your classroom as well, um, and she does an awesome job with, with reading those, carrying their words out, explaining it, and, and then bringing it all together with, uh, some kind of student-centered piece like that.
Yeah, I'm really here to recognize the effort the staff puts into the PDs and the fact that, uh, they're, they're fully reflective, under all practice, they're willing to, to take what, um, what they've learned and try to implement in the classroom. Of course, those things take time, you know? The first time through something might not go as planned, but through perseverance and, and, you know, speaking with it and using your experience along with your knowledge, um, you see examples of that in the classrooms. And so, I'm really here to recognize the staff for, for the willingness to, to take those sorts of steps. And that's not, those aren't the only sorts of examples that you want to see around the building. The one that you see there actually comes from the, the building or from the board goal, uh, the board plan, uh, so some other things that you want to see on the building. Purposeful questioning that leads to deeper thinking, right? So, that happens at every grade level, at every classroom. The picture that you're looking at there is actually a picture of our, our youngest class in the, in the building, our B5K split, in this is Martin's class. And the part about purposeful questioning is that it's not left at just a surface level. It isn't just the what question. It isn't just questions that, that, that the students answer because they've memorized and answered. There are purposeful questions that this marginology can use to really dig deeper, to get the team, to get the students to really defend their, their answers and, and to ask students to answer the why questions. So, that's happening around the building. When you see, Tammy talked about the workshop model, uh, in the LA promoting, uh, in many cases in penetrating time, um, it's student-centered because those, the bins that they're reading from are individualized to their, uh, reading levels, right? And so, uh, you'll see in that classroom, actually that, I think comes from this classroom as well, or these to the PDs, uh, you know, rich, um, classroom libraries, libraries that offers students, you know, lots of choices in terms of genre and theme and models and that sort of thing. But those elements that, that, of the workshop model, which many people think apply only to the LA instruction, really don't. Um, the top, the picture on the top right shows, um, Mrs. Stokes' math class using elements of that workshop model where students are working, uh, in groups around the room, but also are conferencing with the teacher, getting specific feedback. So, there's a, you can see that balance between teacher-directed as well as student-centered, student-directed activities around the classroom. And so, it's, again, the balance. Another example of some, um, some vocabulary building, um, again, it's one of the essential practices, something the state of Michigan has, has researched and supported, you should see it at every classroom every day. Um, so this, um, word wall that you're looking at here is not a teacher-directed word wall, that's a student-directed word, word wall. And it's not the only, uh, word wall like that in the building. That one actually happens to come from Josh Back's class, his three-four split class, and one of the students select words from the, from the books that they're reading that they find interesting, that they, um, didn't know about, and they want to share with their classmates. And then, of course, an inquiry-based, uh, science curriculum promotes, um, you know, that sort of, uh, student-centeredness. And in this case, they were working on the robotics unit, and it's just cool in itself, building robots. Um, and I'm seeing this video, I'll actually play...
This was very student-centered, so the teacher didn't really teach, she didn't stand up and instruct at all, had to go on the front look, get the directions from the, the front look, and work as a team to build these chassis. And then after the chassis were built, they had to work as a team to add to them, to complete a text.
Let's ask you, if you're involved in the, uh, in the video, if you may, if you'd like. Can you jump out of that?
Yep.
When I made the video, it wasn't for the purpose of this presentation, the kids just came into the office, they were really excited, they were like, hey, please.
All right, so I'm in my office, I've got three young scientists here with me. They have been creating, uh, robots in science class and, uh, mother science curriculum. And this robot eventually is going to be what?
Toxic waste.
And it's going to, going to do that how?
Um...
What is that in front of this thing?
Um, this is a color sensor.
And so, today was just putting the robot together, maybe yesterday, but eventually they're going to use this somehow to pick up toxic waste. All right, let's see this thing move. I'll drag it off the table.
I was nervous.
Cool. All right, so I want to see it, when you guys had it, uh, actually experimenting with purpose, right? Or kind of like trying to get under the finger of how it works in order to make it work more. All right, it's very cool.
So, what they, they finished that, you, you sent that video, Stacey, and essentially what they had is a big piece of paper that they put on the floor with different colors on the, uh, on a piece of paper. And they set the robot down, and like, like they had said, there was that color sensor on the front of it, and so it would move, and when it located the toxic waste, it would, it would do something to simulate cleaning it up. So, it was, the kids were super excited about that whole project, you know, from the very, the very beginning. Like Tammy said, there's very little direct teacher instruction, uh, during an inquiry-based model like that, or a lesson like that. Students are posed with a, with a problem, they're taught, you know, how to build a robot. From that, they kind of, they're on their own to figure out how to make it work. So, um, last up is where we're at right now. Continuing to explore, examine more student-centered practices through the book study. Again, most of this is done during our PD times, and so we have several PDs offering of course in school year. And then we're also looking forward to the feedback that the district will provide during our upcoming, making walks that we will be visiting Murphy in April. And from that feedback, we'll be using that to, again, to help us determine what the next steps are, uh, for us at Murphy. So, that brings us to the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Downey or staff? Anybody have any comments they want to leave while they're here, because we're going to let you go here early pretty quick.
Thank you.
That was awesome. You can't see on the back here, but you have to strike a look pretty...
Oh, yes, I should, yes. (Laughter)
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. And you guys from Murphy are welcome to leave if you'd like. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. I have received two public comment cards. Is there anyone else before we move on? No? All right. Comment about public comment. A board meeting is a meeting of school district business held in the public. It is not a public meeting. The board is not going to respond to those making public comments, but will direct the superintendent to follow up with the presenter. Thirty minutes is set aside in public comments, so each presenter is being asked to keep their comments brief. The board does not comment in public on any student or employee, and asks the presenters to be respectful of any person they comment above. With that, I would ask Mr. Murray Street to forward this.
Okay. Did you say that was a three-minute group?
I didn't restrict you, I said you got thirty minutes total.
Thirty? I don't need that long a call.
Thank you.
I'm here just to, as a citizen, and a citizen who represents the seniors, some of the senior citizens, who's asked me to come before the board, and amongst other, that's it, I'm here. We went through a, last month, you can, sorry to bring up this, this issue of the millage, but the millage is over. And I know that this board is entertaining or engaging in thought as to how we're going to handle the operational meetings and so forth. I have been in touch with your superintendent, and I have invited him to dial in our commut commission through this group called Collaboration. Now, the, the reason I did this is because Matt has come to our board, the, uh, the peer commut department, he made presentations twice, extensively telling us that he has a group of six hundred or so individuals that he addressed, and that they gave him all this information following through the school board here. But I believe that one school board member read, read the demographics of this community correctly, and that's Ms. Peabody. And I told Mr. Wadre that there are forty-three percent of the citizens of this community who are elderly, retirees, or age fifty-seven, I have to say, or so, fifty-eight or fifty-nine years or older, who do not want to pay for this kind of miller, miller proposal that you did last time. All that said and done, we have to mandate means something. So, what I have suggested to Mr. Wadre, and I'm suggesting to the school board, that this collaboration unit, which encompasses something around thirty-five or forty professional, semi-professional, organizational, governmental entities that meet every, at the first Wednesday of the month, just like you, in the evening, oh, excuse me, in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning, at the, at the mental health facility on M21, I've given Mr. Wadre the information, and now lending to this board his key mail. You need to cooperate or attend those meetings to see whether or not there is a better way for this school board to function in a private, public, sector, joint, and, and adventure. So, as not to duplicate services that are being discussed, for example, the library board wants to do a millage. You guys probably want to do another millage. I don't think the last idea was the best idea. Maybe you can come up with something better, less expensive, without duplicating the services and combining with other entities, to formally something better on behalf of all citizens of this community. So that's why I'm here. I'm just suggesting to you, the date is the first, happens to be eighth of January, because the first is the new year's Eve, so new year's Eve. So it's going to be one day a week following, but it's generally the first Wednesday of the month. And your superintendent or some designation, or some designated person from your board needs to attend that meeting and give you some additional feedback. And that's all I wanted to say to you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gubat?
Well, first off, I just want to say, everybody had a great Thanksgiving. For those of you who don't know, I've been in the district a long time, kids went through the district, I've done it in coach, scouts, and we did field trips and after-school tutoring programs, a lot of stuff over the years. And I, you know, as the first one, is probably the first one to say good things, probably the first one to say bad things, but the most recent partnership that was just announced in the paper was, as far as good for the serps for, for the United Way, I think that's awesome. I mean, we have the potential, in a bygone generation, I think we call it civics, but just teaching and, and teaching our kids, getting out and doing stuff for others, it's awesome. Mr. Wondry isn't here, I, I assume he had some, some part of that, but to everybody was associated with that. I think that's a monumental thing, I think it's a really, really good thing. So I'm very, very happy, very proud to see that. Regarding this previous question we had a month ago, it's all done, it's in books, I would just like to say that there's a lot of comment, some things to think about the last five elections. The one that got everything flipped around, was under split, was the one where we were not building brand new facilities, where we're making use of current facilities that we had. Actually, it was part of that, was a very successful campaign, we got a lot of people on board to do that. I hope in the future, the next set around that we go, I hope we're able to do that, I hope we're able to reach out to others and get something positive and do something good for the kids. But one thing that does disturb me a little bit, Larry, read the paper, you read comments from, from various folks within the district, you know, talking about things, some people aren't interested in being informed, or that, you know, some who are choosing to disregard facts. To a lot of folks, that's kind of very crutch. And I can tell you, as somebody, I don't think many people have known the district and the numbers as much as I do, and there's a lot of people just like, it wasn't a question that people weren't informed, they just chose to go in a different direction. And I would say that if you, if you, you know, if you want to get other people on board, you know, it's, it's the old, you know, kind of saying bad things or implying bad things isn't, or that people weren't smart to do that, is not necessarily the best way to do that. So I would just encourage, in the spirit of those who were around in the 07 campaign, whatever we do, if we can do something to kind of replicate that, I think we're going to go a lot farther. I believe it was like thirty-three years, it would be between passing of onos, and I certainly hope, you know, our kids deserve that, and we need to work, you know, work together to get something that's good for our kids, but I really hope that we don't have to keep reading this kind of stuff in the paper, because it's not a fair, it's not a farewell for whatever future plans hold, so. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda is records, and first up is teaching, learning, and technology. Mr. Peabody, I understand you are the one tonight?
This is exciting. The teaching, learning, and technology committee met on November twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen at five p.m. Those attending were Summer Quentner, Mike Keller, Superintendent Wondry, Michelle Rieffler, Jamie Recker, and myself. We discussed a new, the time of year we, as a committee, we have to bring to the board to approve any new courses that will be offered to our students. And the first new course will be an AP European history class. A teacher brought this to Mr. Lindsay, Mr. Wondry, and Michelle. It'll be offered in grades nine through twelve, and it'll be taught by a newer teacher in the district, Christopher Wazinski, who has a passion and love of European history. So that will be offered, we'll see what interest will be with that. And then the second exciting thing, and I mentioned this already, Jamie's with us tonight, but congratulations to her again, because she wrote a grant for a Marshall Plan course proposals. So she introduced those to us, and they're two career and technical pathways, machine tool technology and automation in robotics. I knew when I saw the robot, the Murphy students, I was looking at Jamie, and she, it was like, exciting to see the robotics at that age and students doing that. So these two courses will both provide students with graduation credits and marketable credentials. Under the machine tool and technology pathway, which is a two-year commitment, students can earn the following: a BPA credit, algebra II credit, four-year math credit, exemption from second-year world language credit. In addition, the following credentials can be earned, and I can read them all, but Parker Hannafin Industrial Pneumatic Technology, Parker Happenin Industrial Hydraulic Technology, Banuk Fanak Machining Setup Operations and Programming, Fanak Tuning, Turning Setup Operations and Programming, and Stratus Addictive Manufacturing Technology. Under the automation and robotics pathway, which is a two-year commitment, students can earn the following. Is that all the same, Jamie?
No.
No. BPA credit, algebra II credit, four-year math credit, exemption from second-year world language credit. In addition, they'll earn the following credentials: Allen Bradley Rockwell Automation, Intro to Automation, AC/DC Drive and Micro 850 Programming, Parker Hannafin Industrial Pneumatic Technology, Parker Hannafin Industrial Hydraulic Technology, Fanak Machining Setup Operations and Programming, CNC Mill or Lab, Fanak IR Vision Operations and Programming, and Stratus Addictive Manufacturing Technology. So these are just two ideal, wonderful new options for that student that has a passion for that. We discussed about the number of students in the program, staffing, after-hour training for adults, and the strategy of including the business and industry partnerships in the area. It's requested that Jamie include a few other names from Outline Industries. There's a CTD Advisory Committee meeting that will be taking place December ninth, two thousand and nineteen at the high school, right?
Here.
Oh, here, what time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Once courses are approved, an application will be submitted to the Michigan Department Ed. So it's very, very, very exciting courses, the, the, the courses, for those two. So Jamie's here to answer any questions we may have after this. Then the second, really interesting presentation was of Skinner Lake Forest Management Stewardship Plan in Beth Rupert's absence, I know I messed her name up. Jamie Recker presented the Skinner Lake Forest Stewardship Plan to the committee. Upon approval, the forester will write a grant to help cover the projected costs. In addition, there's discussion and approval of writing the grant to remove invasive species. Mr. Kellner suggested that AP students work closely with Mr. Rupert, obviously, for their credit. And the forester during this time, in order to use management plan as a learning opportunity for maintaining the health of the forest. As a consensus of the committee, no action will occur until they have sufficient time to review the point number of approval. So it's a very interesting and exciting TLT meeting. So are there any questions, for me, Summer, or Jamie? Jamie's here to answer them.
Questions, have any? Yeah, there's a great thing going on. Thank you, Jamie, I didn't know you were so many. That's Forest Big Two.
I guess I've got to protect those trees.
Amazing, you have the talent of the local and our district to guide all of these forests and get these things off the ground. That's a good answer. Thank you, Mrs. Peabody. All right. Next, the moment we've all been waiting for. Item number five, the presentation of the two thousand and nineteen audit report.
So before we, before we get there, we're going to go off script just slightly, Mr. Wondry. So, no, we can stand there, we can stand there, we don't want you to wait the whole evening. So, this young gentleman, I believe this is thirty-seven, audit, the school district of LaPire. Twenty-two years as a partner firm, is, is successor, Donna.
Hello.
Partner, also applying in Rand, attending tonight due to the presentation. Our lead on the audit, Tiffany. Stacy wasn't able to attend, she's at a conference, I believe, for the firm, for professional development. Eric and I have known each other for, I was trying to figure it out, Eric is, I think, thirty, if not, slightly over thirty years, because I've been in the business thirty-two years. And you and I have worked through numerous districts and ISDs, and even up here, we've crossed paths, which is kind of neat for me. It's bittersweet to see you go, because you put so much time in here, you started here, you shared that story with us at lunch of your first audit assignment here, and the accident, then you went off on sick leave, and you returned many more times, and you've been an asset to the district. And I certainly miss you both personally and professionally, but I know you're not leaving totally from the profession, you'll still be at different professional developments and areas, ICU, outside of daily business here, so that's good news, we're not losing all that knowledge we have on school education, still be working behind the scenes. We're in good hands with Donna, I've known Donna for, I think, over a decade also, so we are, as a district, in good hands with the successor and the audit team. We have always a great audit team who does the heavy lifting and helps our staff out. With that, I want to recognize and give you some tokens of appreciation, our LaPire gear from the board and the whole team, so that you don't forget us, though I know you won't.
Mark, it's really hard to prove it.
You're absolutely fine, appreciate you coming through the district. You want to take it out and show everyone? Of course, there's nothing to embarrass you.
You're actually helping me out all day.
There you go.
It's happened, I appreciate it. Okay, this, I'm sure I can figure out a lease for this. And, you know.
Are you open to that?
Full tub, lightning, excellent. Excellent. Well, I'm, I'm going to wear the hat for the rest of the day, and I won't necessarily do it, but I was going to bring it up later. So when you, when you merged your two buildings, and you took your theme of LaPire, you were gracious enough to share this t-shirt. And I said, it's probably not, I said to Donna, and I said, so, when I get to the end of this, I was thinking, am I going to put the t-shirt on? Is she okay with that? Then she laughed for a while, she thought that'd be fine. I think I'll just stick with the hat, I think it looks better, but, but the feeling is mutual. This is truly a very special place.
The love affair is not over. I did get you put on a different hat. Peggy Bush has apologized, she's not here to say goodbye to you, but she does have a message that she's thankful to you for being such a great person. She left this for you. There is a kiss that goes with this, but I.
One of the women can't shake out of it. Thank you very much, very much. Oh, that's, means a lot. That means a lot. And, and just as a, just as a comment, I, I always enjoyed the presentations from other schools. And the one thought I had, the first thing I thought is, is that's a far cry from flashcards and numbers. Okay? And the second thing that stood out to me was the one picture that he had of the students in the circle. The position of the students was laying into the circle with focus inward. I, I do a lot of work with high school kids, the number one thing a high school kid wants to do is they want to sit and put their head back. And what you showed there was student engagement at its highest level. And that, that, when you, when I think of LaPire as well as education in a broader context, what, what you see is the effort that they're making to truly make education not only something they go through, but something they experience, and then ultimately, which you saw there was stick doors, stuff that truly sticks with that, you know? And that, that's awesome, that's awesome. The things that you've done here over these last couple, three, you know, great, you've had a lot of challenges up and downs, but you know, you have some challenges currently, you have facility needs, and trying to figure out how to manage those. But one of the things that's great about LaPire is that they've always tried to find a way to maximize that. And that, and that's really.
Ready? We're ready.
Okay.
Thank you.
How fun. So, we were, we were chatting earlier, this is, we met with the finance and operations committee back in October, so we kind of went through all this, and I realize that you are now five and a half months into your fiscal year, so this is a little bit of old news, but it's all good news. So, if you know, the, the district gets financial statement on it, that's required by the state, it's how it is submitted to the state by number one, there's no problem with it. Our job as auditors is to come to a conclusion or come to an opinion. An unmodified opinion is, it's like in an A class. It's, what it really is communicating as us as auditors, when we look at the information, we didn't identify any issues, any significant issues that would require a change with financial information, unification. So that unmodified opinion is the highest level assurance that you can give, an auditor can give, we didn't have any findings on the, on the basic statements. The same thing applies to the SIN law. You know, we audited John Christian Cluster, you might come back a few years, you did have some issues with that, you didn't have any issues related to that that didn't have any findings. And then we also gave you that third report, which was really just a communication to the board of education, and we talked about some of the significant, like, audit matters and things that you should pay attention to. The key element of that letter is, is that we did not have any major issues of concern. The last slide there says no audit adjustments. One of the comments also I made back, I think when Matt first joined the district, is that the most difficult time for a business official is to walk in mid-year to the new district, because you're managing somebody else's stuff that they put together, they have their strategy, and you have to kind of figure it all out. And so to get to the end of the year and to not have any audit adjustments, not have sufficient efficiency of material needs, not have any significant control concerns, is really a credit to your finance team and to Jamie Young, and the hard work that you put forth in getting our audit to where it needs to be. She was super great to work with, we really appreciated her calls over the audit, she had a lot of calls to correct, and it was, really, it was a pretty collaborative relationship. Now we get to the good part of this slide.
Okay, I can just take over. As Eric mentioned, we went through the financial statements and the board presentation in very detail at the finance committee meeting, so I'm just going to really hit the high points. What you're seeing on the screen is the government fund for the election, so this would be a snapshot in time at June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. And it depicts the general fund, the two thousand and sixteen funding bond, which these are the two major funds of the district, and then all other funds are reported in that par column, in the non-major funds column. A couple items to point out, just focusing on the general fund. Total assets at June thirtieth were approximately thirteen point eight million dollars, and a largest component of that relates to receivables, which is the state aid funding that you'll receive over the summer. Total liabilities, around nine point two million dollars, and the accrued liabilities and other, that includes the accrued salaries and benefits that will be paid for the summer months as well. Fund balance at the end of the year was four point six million dollars. Continuing, and discussing with these funds as well, focusing on the general fund, which is the primary operating fund of the district. Total revenue was approximately fifty point two million dollars. The largest piece of the revenue is the state aid revenue, the district has received. Expenditures, total expenditures, forty-nine point two million, and you can see the various components there, which we have additional graphs to admit in more detail. Considering the other finance. Considering the other financing sources of the district, the net, total net change in fund balance was $927,000 that was added to fund balance, which resulted in $4.6 million at the end of the year. Now, the 2016 refunding bond, what you see is the local source revenue there, that is the property tax receivable, or receipts that the district receives in order to pay the debt service of those funds. And then the other non-major governmental funds again, that is the other debt service fund the district has, as well as the capital fund in one. Now, the statement of net position, this is what we call the full accrual financial statement of the district. So the district in the financial statements has actually two sets of books, the funds, which is where, how the district, the day-to-day operations and funding, but then also is required to have this full accrual statement. So the statement of net position reflects the assets and liabilities on a full accrual basis, so that includes, I always describe this as, if you look at the 2019 column, this is all the funds of the district, plus all of the assets of the district and the liabilities of the district in one column. The largest asset, of course, is approximately $60 million, which would be the capital assets, which would be all the buildings and equipment the district has, which is depreciated annually. In the liability section here, towards the bottom of that subtotal, you'll see the long-term liabilities, specifically the bottom two related to the net pension liability and the net OPAH liability, that would be the retirement health care portion of the move service plan. Now, those two liabilities, total, you know, over $100 million, and relate, is the adequate portion of the unfunded liability at the state level. That was required to be put, according on the books, in the last few years, according to governmental standards, NCS 75 and 68, that newly required that liability to be recorded on the books there. That said, as with most districts in the state, that leads to a result of a negative net position at the end of the year around $77.4 million.
Just, you know, as a comment, first you see the net pension liability went up from last year to this year. The primary reason for that is a change of assumptions. They reduced the discount rate, and the discount rate is the method that they use to calculate the present value of the liability. When you reduce the discount rate, that means the resulting calculation of the number. So, while, there's nothing substantively that has changed to the program, it's the assumption changes that changed the value of the liability. Your level of participation in the program is basically the same as yours.
Yeah, so the liability in total of the state went from $26 billion, and because of this change, up to $30 billion, just because of that assumption change.
Okay, so I can't help but put my teeth in my head on this, sorry, I'm probably right. But governmental funds, basically, I explain to my students, this is a budget, this is year-to-year, nothing further than a year. When you go to statement of net position, this is everything. So this would be like looking at your mortgage 30 years out, right, and everything that you owe. So this one, the governmental funds, we use to drive our budget, because we are cash basis, right, we use, what we have come in and goes out, so, yeah, hopefully that helps.
Like current resources and current expenditures.
Hopefully helps the school.
Okay, next graph takes a deeper dive here to the general fund revenue and provides a three-year comparison and the sources of the revenue. So local source revenue, state restricted and unrestricted, and federal and other. If we're 2019, the state restricted revenue is to note, that includes the, what you hear as term, it is a 147(c)(d) money, this would be restricted retirement funding. So the district receives funding from the state that has to be directly paid into the retirement system. It's reflected as revenue and expenditures on the district books, as it's required to be quoted that way, but you have no say in what those dollars are spent on.
Yeah, you know, on that, from a pictorial perspective, the difficulty becomes, it looks like you received $1, but those $1 were used just to pay the bigger debt. You got to change again and receive services to students.
And you can see over three years, nominal increases in revenue over that time. Now, these high target fund expenditures, looking at 2018 compared to 2019, broken down by instruction, support services, athletics, community services, and other. The largest component here, of course, is instruction at 58% of the expenditures of the district, and year-over-year, the percentage is relatively consistent. And keeping that 58% in mind, the next graph details instructional expenditures compared to group D schools and group E schools. And group D schools would be schools that have students from 5,000 to 10,000, to bump kids, and group E districts from 4,500 to 5,000, so the ability has expanded quite a bit. And this is a graph that's put together, I think it's been historically presented to the board, and there was a change in 2018 where, because of the loss of student count, the district, Lupier, actually dropped into the group E district category as a result. And there's only seven districts in the group E category. Lupier is reflected here at the 58.12 pupils, and really aligns with the group E districts. I think that drop as well reflected some recategorization when the new computers or someone into place and how certain expenditures were categorized as well. Next graph, analysis of general fund expenditures, three-year comparison, and this depicts where those public dollars were spent. The largest component is, of course, salaries and fringes, and that makes up around 85% of all district expenditures. So 85 cents of every dollar is spent, it's in salaries and fringes. And because of the increases in the amount of retirement funding requirements that the district gets paid, the system's mandated, you're seeing an increase over time. Next is general fund balance analysis. So this is where the CP Harrison, from 2017 to 2019, of fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, and this is a ratio that districts compare themselves and their fiscal health against each other at the state level primarily. Fund balance as a percentage of expenditures for 2019 was around 9.35%. The board goal reflects 10%, so being close to the board goal. From a comparison purpose, in looking at 2018, the statewide average for all the state of Michigan excluding Detroit public schools was around 13.96%, so still below where the average was last time around, 2018, but again, you made some ground there. The bottom portion of the graph depicts another ratio, and this is to measure according to the early warning thresholds. So that would be fund balance as a percentage of unrestricted revenue. At 2019, the district was at 11.5%, and that early warning threshold, that bar that's monitored is at 5%, so you're well above that. But they are thresholds to be reminded.
Now, I saw that there were key themes that been, you know, achieving the financial stability, and as you know, the fund equity had dipped down, and you were kind of running close to the early warning metric numbers, and you did put forth some significant efforts to try and just maintain a stable and sustained environment. This shows some of the results of that. One of the difficulties as you look in the future is it's a little hard to tell what will happen in the future through the year that you're in right now. You know, you received $240 per pupil on the increase, which was the same as last year. You didn't find that out until October 31st at about 1:39 PM. So, which is why I put your year start, and it's very hard to predict based on what has happened tonight, and how, what funding will look like going forward. So this continued focus not only providing services to students and doing the right thing, but is also making sure that the learning is sustained over time.
Next is foundation allowance analysis in comparison to the state average of foundation allowance, group E schools and group E schools. So Lupier would be at the lowest foundation allowance in the state, along with many other districts in the state. But, and this is interesting, because this graph actually shows kind of that inequity in funding per pupil that is in, not only in the state average, but in those categories of group E and group E schools. And that lost revenue as a result of inequity, and that's what we put in the small print in the bottom. So for example, in the group D category there, the average per pupil funding is $8,368 per pupil compared to in 2019, the $7,871 that Lupier has per pupil. And that alone is around $2.5 million of funding equity. Because there's the two-times formula, which you've probably heard, and you know that this is continuing through 2020, you know, the lowest foundation allowance districts do get the highest amount of funding increases, so the district has received a $240 per pupil increase for 2020, and then the higher funded districts receive less, and that's essentially caused these, you know, the inequity really to shrink the gap between those.
If you look at some of these graphs from five, six years ago, those financial impact numbers were two, three times the way I got it.
General fund revenue and expenditures is a per pupil analysis for three years. You can see revenues and expenditures continue to be very close, but you see nominal increases over that time, and, you know, expenditures are just following suit. Your expenditures are increasing at a pace that has to be managed, because you're within the government of the district received, and so you can see that consistency over time frame. And just continued, as Eric was mentioning, for insurance or certificate of school funding, I think I found it on the table here.
Well, actually, as I was driving around today, well, this morning when I read my governor's meeting release, it said, there's a progress meeting on Monday, which is where all the members of the theaters of the legislature meet with the governor, discuss it for Monday, and then I expect that to happen, and then I'm driving around, and then I hear Jim Scubik saying, oh, it's possible that I got a budget built together, but it could blow up as fast as it could go together, so we don't know. The theme in all of that is, since the budget was put on the governor's desk, we had a mess, right, because they don't really want to talk to each other, this is whatever political reason that is, it doesn't create an opportunity for us to know where we're going, because they haven't, it's all about kind of self doubt. The other thing that was interesting, as the budget developed for the year that you're auditing, the governor adopted a, or kind of included a lot of the collaboration study concepts in her budget, and even during the budget development process, the legislature had several elements of the collaboration study. So what it began with at 11:59 on October 31st, basically a continuation budget. It basically took what we were doing before, they tweaked it a little bit, and they rolled it forward. So, as we're looking into the future again, how is school funding going to be structured? What are the priorities going to be, and how are they going to come to agreement on that, really is in state flux compared to the last administration, which basically had a model that the Republican legislature had pretty much adopted, and so we had that just kind of on a uniform basis. So, in the next, I guess, honestly, the next time around, in February, the governor will provide her budget for the next year as a start, and then we'll get another picture. It makes it harder for folks that are from the business office, from the superintendent for the court, to really make really good long-term decisions when it's unclear exactly what your expectation are for education and the resources that we need for the conversation. Having said that, you know, once again, if you're focused on, you know, what resources do we have, what things are we going to focus on, how are we going to allocate those resources so that we can sustain them? The last bullet item there, the bond issue itself was created because you made that the need. The result of that vote did not take where you definitely need it. But what it does do is change the conversation about how you can address them and what needs to be addressed. So, from a strategic standpoint, continuing to talk about that and figuring out what you need to do from a capital perspective to make sure that we're all set up to service the students tomorrow, we'll continue to do that. And then how to get that. Questions about, kind of, what's for the, anybody?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, Mark, thank you to Dana Young and the entire business office for all of the help they provide, caring for the audit, and it is hard work, we take a lot of their time when we are here, we really appreciate, yeah.
And it's truly been an honor, sort of, that this is as down as it seems you are from the office, it's one of my favorite places to talk about things that you've been able to do over the years. And, you know, continue to focus where you have, it's good things on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
You look really good in that.
I'm just in a work presentation today.
All right, moving on to action items, we finally have one thing tonight, and that's consent grouping. And the consent grouping is approval of the minutes of November 6, 2018, regular meeting, and the second meeting and adoption of board policy, 2410 prohibition of referral or assistance on like any code. I would entertain a motion, please.
I'm having a motion, the reading of the minutes of House, we're waiting for the consent to turn that idea to your approval, that's for granted.
All right, we've been moved and supported. I think on this one, consent, we can just, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not motion, curious. Good, next on the agenda is closed session. Before we go into closed session, would anyone like to make a motion to move our comments up, or do you want to reserve those until the end?
So a motion to amend the agenda. I'll make the motion to amend the agenda, move board member communications slash topics to be for closed session.
Support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not motion, curious. All right, who'd like to start? Denise is laughing, Denise, not watching over.
I already.
Remind us of what we're crashing.
All right, well, we had, okay, we had the one at CFI on November 9th, now this Saturday, they're having the athletic boosters one at the high school, so hopefully that will be a success too.
I'd like to thank Denise, because I'm part of Project Graduation this year, and her help was greatly appreciated, we really appreciate the support. I also want to mention we have books versus badges coming up this November 14th. I hope everyone will come and support the staff versus the chair department. And we are also donating, Project Graduation made a decision to donate part of our proceeds to the, I think her name's Cheyenne, she's on the Lupier County Sheriff's Department, she needs a kidney, and so made a mo- And so we made a motion, all the parents said that we would like to get back to her, since the sheriff's department is playing a big game. So we're kind of excited that we're really hoping for a great turnout. It's a support vote. It's gonna be a fun night. I went last year and looked a lot. It was so much fun watching these administrators run that court.
It was great. There's a fundraiser right now this Friday night for Nate, our teacher, for Mitch and Maybell. It seems to be one of those.
I would like to, are you done? Are you done? Are you done? Yeah. I'd like to thank Mr. Downey for coming. And we've been hearing about these instructional rounds. It's pretty interesting to hear how it's making an impact with the teachers. Again, I want to congratulate Jamie at this Marshall Plan. I would encourage you to reach out to her, to talk to her about it, because a lot of time, I'm not, I just hear grant writing sometimes, you write a grant, and it doesn't come through the first time, the second time, or the third time. But, was it the second or first?
Second.
But still, it's just a huge, it's a huge, huge endeavor she's taken and a really great opportunity for those kids that want that alternate plan and have another pathway that they can get those credits, but with a passion that they love. And so I was just excited to hear about that at the meeting that day. So pick Jamie's brain, she knows it inside and out.
She asked you, right?
So I know, I'm like.
Grant writing is a skill.
And just, I got to just see her passion for it. Like, I watched her with a smile and feel, I don't know if she had tears in her eyes. Close. And Merry Christmas, everyone, and have a good one.
We've only got two things tonight. I'd like to thank Bill and Maurice for coming to speak tonight. And then, our football season didn't end the way that a lot of us expected. But, I'd like to thank the leaders that we have in and around our schools, especially Mr. Lindsay and others, that our student athletes in our community carry ourselves in such a positive manner. I think we see, and it doesn't matter where, but you have situations where sometimes good heads don't prevail, especially when you play your rival and what have you. The way things ended at our season, it went very smoothly. And I'd like to just throw that out there, how proud I was of how things were handled. And that we will always hang our head high, so thank you.
Anyone else, anything? All right. Just want to say thank you to Mr. Downey and the staff at Murphy. Mr. Pyle's supposed to be the receiver. She talked about the number here she's been in the district when we were at Murphy here not too long ago, I said, there's no way, there's no way. I think, I think that sort of, I'd call it youthful exuberances must be what you all have to do what you do on a daily basis, to keep coming back and dealing with these kids day after day after day. Do it with a smile, and then still wake up and go back the next day. We can't thank you enough. Mr. Downey, I appreciate the fact that you're here to tell us about what's going on. Murphy, Murphy has been a leader in our district for years. And under your tutelage and assistance, I know that the staff there will continue to do great things for our kids. We really appreciate that. And I wish Tammy was still here, because I've known Tammy for a number of years, and we've all followed her through the different schools she's been at. She's amazing, and a real credit to our district, and a real asset for Murphy. So, thank you very much for being here and for presenting. Also, I just want to say, because I wasn't here at the last meeting, I had some things going on, my family that kept me from here, but I just want to say, regardless of the outcome of the election, which I was disappointed, I think we can do better, and our kids deserve better. But forgetting that, I appreciate the fact that people are passionate about that election, and the kids, either way, I was disappointed in the voter turnout. I don't think that was, I don't know that we got a good representation of what our community truly thinks about that bond proposal. Maybe we did, I don't know. But it's hard for me to take an overwhelming mandate from a very small slice of the public. And so, I just, we all learn our lessons, we all move forward, and we all, like Mr. Freed, he invited mad representatives from our district to be part of this collaborative process. Why wouldn't we be? I mean, I think that just makes sense. And certainly, I'm not too old to learn. And I know that we all are just trying to do our best with the kids, and if we can find a better way to move forward, then we will definitely do that. I want to tell everyone, this is the seventh year of the paint-out basketball game, which is coming up on Friday, December thirteenth. I would encourage you all to come to the high school, watch a great game between Lupier and Davison. And Davison travels well, I hope that we have way more kids there than they do. And if they travel like they have in the past for these games, it's really fun. And if you haven't been there, you should try it, because Davison gets into it too, and they even travel pink. I mean, they're already wearing a pink leotard this year. No, I'm going to do you a long favor, I'm not going to. But it's Friday the thirteenth, and it's actually basketball season. It's just getting ready to kick off next week. We've got four really hard games at the beginning of the season. Davison's the second game, we'll see how it goes. But if you all are able, please come out and support the event. It's Friday the thirteenth.
And we scheduled it that way, so we'd have a great weekend of basketball. So the thirteenth is the paint-out, and the fourteenth is the books versus badges. So we started out with a bang.
That's right.
I have a question, Mr. Freed, what time is that meeting, and that being?
It is in the morning at eight AM.
Mr. Raider?
I don't have anything other than one simple communication for those that are residents who would or will be receiving the notification of the city about water testing and the lens on the residential pipes. So my only comment is, yes, we have posted our notices as required by all of the school buildings. Our water in our buildings that are city-fed is tested by the city before it ever enters our building, so we're not a part of this program. Our buildings that are in the townships, we're on a regular basis that we test it, and they're all have passed the test. So we don't have concern of that. This is a required communication that's quite confusing for the public. But as you know, with the city, it's required. There's a number of letters and representations that are handed out by law, and we post them in our buildings, and we've also received this kind of phase mail for these. That's the only I have for superintendent comments.
All right, great, thank you very much. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion to move to closed session.
All right, the move in support, all right, we've been supported. All those in favor who want closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Motion. Any ayes? No? Motion passes, let's go into closed session. All right, we are, we are back in session. And we're returned to open session. I would entertain a motion with respect to the Lupier Education Association master agreement. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would motion for.
I will, if you want. I agree that the Lupier Education Association master agreement be approved as presented.
Support.
Moved in, supported for this one, I'd like a roll call, please. This is Deba.
Yes.
This is Nobet.
Aye.
This is Putnam.
Aye.
Mr. Haggenon.
Aye.
This is Becker.
Electantly, I have to abstain, because I've got a teacher and a family.
Mr. Nolan says aye. Motion carries, very good. I'm up for one more motion here.
I'm still here.
All right, support. All right, we've been supported, we'll do this one straight away. All those in favor?
Aye.